And with that, you may be seated and have your roll call members, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District Three. Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington at large.
Here.
We have four, thank you, ma'am. With that, the next item is to approve the agenda. Anything to add to or take away from the agenda must follow.
I don't have anything.
Can you approve the agenda? Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
You're the second, any discussion? All three of us said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is item number five. The minutes from October the fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Have a chance to look at it, if you have. If you haven't, it must approve the minutes as presented.
Who moved?
You made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Who said? Ms. Addington, second. Any discussion? All three of us said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item, citizen's expression period, and I'll read this short statement, get right into that. All right, citizen's expression period upon meeting, but anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and/or what organization you represent. The board mayor may not respond to anything you say, but we will make everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, have them start, do you want to sign up?
They have not.
We have no particular order, we just ask that you take turns and speak your business, and you actually will be considered after we close this expression. With that, citizen's expression is noted.
Is it open now?
It is, you can, or you can leave it off on speaker, and then you can come on down if you can.
Okay.
Say your name, where you're from, and the county.
Kathy Cox, by coast Stanley Town, District, Mr. Mann. I heard the other day that they are getting ready to pave Greens Chapel Road. That's rumor or true?
They're working on it as we speak, I looked at it the other day, it's something they are.
They are going to pave it? Okay. My question is, that's a dead end road, there's not a handful of people lives in there. And we, I have tried and tried to get them to work on the Castile Hall Road. It's not dead end, there's twelve families in there, and it's, it's backshady. Some places, it's just so narrow that you have to back a long ways to pass somebody, school bus has difficulties. But we need to get that on a six-year plan somehow, if that's possible. And I've, I've called to talk to people in Richmond. I said, well, if we send work orders down to State Department, it's their discretion of what they do, or they don't touch it, or do whatever. But I don't know who is over the State Department for Blackmore. And before I came, we're the board trying to get them to work on this, on my road, and I went to every family that had road front property, and I didn't get one person to oppose giving land for widening the road, not one person. So that wouldn't be a problem of getting, you know, somebody to give the road. But, yeah, we need to get that on a six-year plan. I mean, we'd be in bypass, they were, Flint Den, dead end road, I think there might be three families in there, they paved that several years ago. I mean, they're paving dead end roads, ours is the first all the way through, and they use our road when it floods out from, I don't know where you call it out there, but it floods, and when it cuts that traffic off, they have to come around our road, go down around Fort Blackmore and around. So they, it's a road for them too, the people don't live in there. That's it.
Well, they, they'll be here in a few minutes to speak, and they'll address this, so I'm glad you came, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Castile Hall Road.
Good morning, Peggy Cox from Snowflake Road. I feel like I see you all more than I do, because of my family. But, and I feel like it's a broken record, but dirt roads, is a dirt road, or secondary roads, whatever you want to call them, they're either dusty or muddy. But I'd like for somebody to try to get some monies from the primary roads that don't need work moved over to the secondary. But we've been told you can't move it from one park to the other. But right now, Snowflake Road, for it to be a dirt road, is in better condition, really. I mean, but we've had a lot of dust this summer, and we've had one dust control thing put down. And I'm here too, on behalf of all of them who lives on Snowflake Road, plus the buses, FedEx, the postal drivers, UPS, and Prime. I mean, you know, they're on that road a lot, and they seem to be, they're on a schedule. So you're gonna really be careful when you meet them. And I want to thank you all for, and VDOT, for listening to our complaints about the road, and keep us on a six-year plan. And thank you all, and y'all have a happy and thanks, and a blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Peggy.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Sheriff.
How are you?
Good, Sheriff, very good.
I'm Sheriff Jeff Eads, I'll give you our quarterly report for the third quarter. And if you have any questions, let me know. The Scott County Sheriff's Office reports the following activities for the third quarter of two thousand twenty-three. Scott County Central Dispatch received a total of seventeen thousand nine hundred ninety-five calls for the quarter. Of those calls received, two thousand eight hundred ninety-eight were dispatched to the sheriff's office. The total of domestic calls and protective orders was fifty-two. Criminal papers served this period was seven, or seven hundred and nineteen of those, four hundred and thirty felonies, and two hundred and eighty-nine misdemeanors, with seventy-one drug charges, thirteen DUI-related cases. Officers issued two hundred and fifty-four traffic summonses, and were dispatched one hundred and thirteen motor vehicle accidents. Civil processed this period, they served eleven hundred ninety-nine civil papers during this quarter. There were three hundred and ninety-three IBRs, incident reports, reported ninety-one active, and twenty-two marked inactive. Seventy-eight closed arrests. The sheriff's office provided six hundred and thirty-nine hours of courtroom security for three courtrooms. Also, sheriff's office conducted twenty-five checking, checking points. Also, we had sixty-eight out-of-state extradition involving two hundred and one-plus hours, nine thousand forty-four miles traveled for these out-of-state extraditions, also, a total for the year of two hundred and eighty-two. The sheriff's deputies provided nine in-state transports, also processed one hundred and sixty-five concealed gun permits, also processed eighty-seven fingerprint applications, and unlocked fifty vehicles. And that's what we have, quite a few.
Been busy, three months?
It's been busy for the last two quarters. Y'all have any questions, or anything I can answer, or try to answer?
Anyone have any questions for the sheriff? That's a lot, thank you, appreciate what you do.
Yeah, but they do a good job, so, we're trying to stay on top of things, but we're just covering up sort of right now. But I appreciate all of you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizen's expression?
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Bill Davis, Director Public Works. I want to bring to your attention a letter and a plaque that was given to our Public Animal Shelter and Animal Control from the Best Friends Animal Society. That's a five oh one C three nonprofit that operates the nation's largest sanctuary for homeless animals, and provides adoption, spay and neuter education programs with regional programs across the nation. Ms. Julie Castle, the executive officer of Best Friends Animal Society, sent a plaque, and she sent this letter, which I'd like to read to you. On behalf of the Friends Animal Society, I want to congratulate Scott County Animal Control and Public Animal Shelter on achieving a ninety percent save rate for the calendar year two thousand twenty-two. You've joined an elite group of organizations across the country who are leading the way toward making us a no-kill nation by saving ninety percent or more of the animals in your shelter. This accomplishment represents so much more than a number, it represents a culture of caring and compassion. It represents a dedicated staff, committed volunteers, motivated supporters. It represents initiative, thoughtful planning, and represents extraordinary leadership, both within your organization and with our broader animal welfare movement. Although ninety percent is by definition a number, organizations that achieve and maintain no-kill are made up of people who never forget that each fraction of those percentage points represents a life saved. These numbers represent cherished family members who are only alive because of your dedication and hard work. Bottom line, every day, you are, you and your team create more and more opportunities for people and animals to experience love. Please accept this plaque with a representation, as a representation of your dedication, leadership, and incredible milestone you've reached on behalf of the animals we all love. With due respect, Julie Castle, Executive, Chief Executive Officer, Best Friends Animal Society. So that's pretty good recognition from a national organization. And to meet their guidelines as a no-kill shelter, they're looking at a ninety percent save rate. Since two thousand nineteen, when we built our new public animal shelter, we've been below four percent euthanasia rate that compared to over a ninety percent euthanasia rate before we were able to do the shelter. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and the public's attention.
On a note on that, I had a guy from adjoining county was really bragging about our shelter. They said, you know, their county could learn from it, so anyway, they use it a lot, they get some animals there from time to time, and they recommend it to their friends about how good it's been running, and they really like our shelter.
I've been contacted by several localities around us wanting to have, if I provide them with our plans that we had for the animal shelter, and I say, well, it's on a piece of graph paper, and the budget for building our shelter, and the budget we operate with, and they'll say, well, you can't do it for that. I'm like, okay, we do. And I think our animal control and our staff down there, and our volunteers, and the help with Scott County Animal Society is a real asset for this county. Thank you.
Spay and neuter your pets. Spay and neuter your pets.
Spay and neuter, yes.
And most everybody knows our animal shelter burned down, what year was it, go burn down, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, somewhere there about?
Yeah.
It was at the landfill, so it actually ended up being a blessing, we was able to clean up twenty-three out here, so it ended up being a blessing. We, it was burned down, and was able to move it, and a lot of hard work and dedication, we got my VDOT, so, it's a good letter, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, anybody? All right, with that, we'll come out of citizen's expression, pardon, oh, I'm sorry. Good morning.
How's everybody?
All right, state your name, if you would, please.
You're looking good, everybody, this morning, I hope you feel good. I was here last month.
Who would state your name, if you would?
Fritz Gerald Thalen, twenty-three hundred East Carter's Valley. Last month, I was here about lowering the speed limit maybe a little bit in East Carter's Valley, and you all advised me of someone from VDOT would be here today. Are they present?
They are.
Okay. Well, now, how will I learn anything about this, I mean, what, what will they take in consideration?
I reached out to Joey Mullins with VDOT after you were here last month.
Yes, ma'am.
And he pulled up some crash data, and when we looked at the speed limit before, we did lower it in two thousand seventeen from forty-five to forty at that time. And he has asked for the input of another VDOT personnel at the Bristol office to do some deeper look as well. And the crash data is showing that the crashes trended upward after we lowered that speed limit, which is, you know, kind of odd.
More crashes?
More crashes since the speed limit was lowered.
I'm saying the right thing there.
And there's been twenty crashes in the last five-year period. They do think it's worth further consideration, your request. And they may be looking at doing some safety upgrades on that road, such as the rumble strips in the middle, because the crashes, looks like they are crossovers, like people crossing the center line.
Yes, ma'am.
Or roadway departure, I guess going off either side of the road. So VDOT is here today, and Alan, if you want to speak about that, you can. But we are taking a look at this situation, so just, so you know that.
Now, sheriff's office is doing a real good job, in my opinion, over there, but if you travel that road, it's not a lot of spaces to pull a violator over. But if the speed limit was a little bit lower, a lot of people do drive the way they're supposed to. But, you know, if a car is driving right, the correct speed, that will give the law enforcement opportunity to catch up with the violators. Like I say, everybody don't do that, but most of the time, and them folks on the Tennessee side are just as good as people here, but it seemed like that's the shortcut to get to stop and drive, or go to work, or whatever. And they really do drive too fast. We've got a church over there with a lot of senior citizens. We've got school buses that go there every day, and right in front of my house, it's a very bad place for that young, young man to cross the road. And Tim Spicer, he's the driver, he will back me up and the neighborhood. Tim is a good person, a good, safe driver, and, and it's just a matter of time before somebody gets hurt. And we don't want that. And, you know, you put, like, like you said last time, you put the speed limit fifty, people drive fifty-five. Well, over there, you need, if that's the way it is, you need to put it about ten mile an hour. And maybe they're trying. But, you know, I was concerned about that, they, they run out of the road, and missed the morning subdivision, they got a sign right there, and people's are hitting the top of that sign, and it's just a matter of time, but I appreciate what you all do. And another thing, while I'm here, right there on the line, we're getting more and more Tennessee tags over there. Okay, it's kind of hard to get that to and away, but you buy a new vehicle, fifty thousand dollar vehicle, and they don't have Virginia tag registered in Scott County, look at the revenue Scott County is losing over that. Now, you, you talk about fifty thousand dollar vehicle, you may be three or four hundred dollars in lost revenue. And there is getting more and more, and cars are not cheap, but, you know, little old things like this add up. It might save partly in a property tax increase. I mean, I could do the same thing, I just bought one. But we all need to pull our own weight. And, you know, Scott County, it seems like, well, that's so-and-so. He's lived here a hundred and fifty-five years, he's a good old boy, he don't bother nobody or nothing, he ain't, he won't be here much longer, you know, you know how that stuff goes. But if everybody pulled their own weight, it'd be easier on all of us. But, you know, that's a lot of lost revenue over there, and it's more and more, there's one resident over there, got five vehicles, five. Pretty nice vehicles, every one of them Tennessee type. Just that one household is a lot of lost revenue. I mean, think about it, you all pay taxes too, and nobody likes to do it, but we have to. And I don't fuss about that, but I'm a little bit concerned about everybody else, you know? Sometimes it's like, kind of like paying child support when you ain't got no kid. You know, but I'm, I'm sure you all agree with me, but.
Hundred percent.
You know, and sheriff's office, of course, I'm concerned, they're doing a pretty good job, and, but, you know, they might need a little help too, you know, about the speed limit, and if everybody had to slow down and drive right, officers have more opportunity to catch up with the violators. Yeah. Okay.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you, sir, God bless everyone.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak?
VDOT, ma'am.
Anyone else who needs to speak? I'm not going to close this expression period, anyway, the comments Ms. Cox made, which the VDOT folks will speak about in a few minutes on Castile Hall Road, and the Greens Chapel thing is happening as we speak, I looked at it the other day, it was great, and getting it ready, getting it treated, so that's happening too. So, anyway, Ms. Peggy, we hear you on the Snowflake Road, and so they'll be here to speak about that, but you're here, and we appreciate you coming. All right, anything else from you all about citizen's expression? All right. With that, we'll go into our public hearing. This public hearing will be possible adoption of an ordinance amending, restating, and reordaining the transit occupancy tax ordinance to conform with the Code of Virginia to reflect the law, and it is now reads entitled fifty-eight point one, chapter thirty-eight, of Article Six of the Code of Virginia. With that, we will open this public hearing, anyone needing to speak? I've seen no one. Come out of the public hearing, and everybody looked at it, we've talked to Ms. Kegler about what's going on, do you need to speak anything on Ms. Kegler, is that good enough?
It's, the tax is staying the same, we're just changing, updating some language and definitions and who it applies to, and process, and that kind of thing. So no change to the tax amount, it's still two percent.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve this, do we have a motion?
Absolutely, Mr. Trump.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky, second, any discussion? All three of us said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item made is, the VDOT folks are here, so Alan, if you all will come up, and there's the comments already made here, so speaking some of that, if you want to.
Good morning. For those that might not know me, I'm Alan Sunter, I'm the residency administrator for Virginia Department of Transportation's Wise Residency. We cover Lee, Scott, Wise, and Dixon County, the, all the maintenance and activities in those four counties. Good to be here with you all this cool morning. Got a report that's been handed out to you, I'm going to touch on a few things there with that, and then Wade Belcher, our Assistant Residency Administrator, is also going to come up and help with some of it as well. So I'll just kind of be general here to start off with. We were to the point of the year that a lot of our summer maintenance activities are winding down. We've pretty well completed all the mowing that we're going to do, except for some touch, touch-ups here and there. Primaries have been mowed, we've been working on trying to get some patching done before the asphalt plants close. We've also been working on tree trimming, brush removal, those types of activities as well. And also trying to replace some, some pipes, and this time of the year, we're into the time of year that sometimes some of our pipe replacement work has time of year restrictions on it, and so we, we have sometimes a short window to get pipes installed. We're shifting, getting ready for winter operations, we'll still be trying to do some patching and gravel road maintenance as necessary. See our, our two dear friends back here in the back from Snowflake. We just kind of, I just kind of, just want to remind folks on the maintenance of gravel roads. Yes, it's, it's really been a little bit dry this summer, we've kind of had a lot of dust complaints from all over. We're getting to the time of the year that if things hold as, as normal, we'll see more moisture, and that'll kind of take care of the dust there, and unfortunately, will lead us to having some mud on the road, I guess. So we, you know, we will have some of those conditions to deal with as we can. We'll add some gravel to the roadways and blade them, but we, you know, we won't necessarily put gravel on it every week. Yeah, I hope you all, you know, understand that, we just said we don't have the ability to be able to do that, but we'll try to take care of them as best that we can. We, we know where you live, okay, so we'll keep that in mind. Okay. So other items that I mentioned, if you would, Wade's going to come up on the part with the, the part that's on the front, with your all's board member issues that you've brought up, and just kind of update you with that, but I want to go over the rural rustic project part. We, we've got a couple of the roads, Beeline Road, Jane Hill Circle, David, they're complete, as mentioned. Greens Chapel is under construction, Gillwater Road, got based on being applied. Where possible, what our goal is going to try to be on our rural rustic routes that we have under construction is to try to do a tar and chip surface on them, let that winter, and then come back in the spring and do a pavement overlay on, on those. The first road that we have on the list that we're working on, actually trying to get some plans made already for next year is Route eight fifty-six, Spurlock Hall Road, that will be kind of the leadoff road that we will work on next year. Now, I will, for the folks that are here about Castile Road, I will just kind of give a, just a little summary about our six-year plan process of how that, that, that works. We, we update the six-year plan every year in the spring. What happens is we are given information, it comes down from our statewide office in Richmond, that provides us an allocation of what monies will be available for us to spend on construction of bringing gravel roads like the ones I've mentioned up to a paved surface. And so what we try to do is then look at the needs and of, that's throughout the county, and then we usually try have enough money to add one or two roads to the six-year plan in the out year. And as we said, it's a six-year plan, so what we will be doing this next year is that the road will be added to the end of the plan, because we already have roads that are on the plan now, such as you mentioned Greens Chapel, once upon a time, it was like six years out. That road was probably added to the plan probably in like two thousand and seventeen. So some information about adding a road to the six-year plan is that you have to have at least fifty vehicles a day, that's why I was asking you if it's fifty vehicles. if it's 50 vehicles a day on the roadway in order to qualify. And there has to be like at least three homes on the roadway as well. I thought, I thought he was raising his hand there.
No, no. I was turning the TV on. I kept 10 houses on that road.
You've got 10, okay, 10 houses on it. Okay. So, that, and the 50 vehicles a day is that, plus we have to have it be able to be wide enough that we can get like two vehicles a day pass safely through there. Because usually what happens is that when we put a hard surface on there, then it speeds the traffic up. And so, we gotta make sure that do, able to do that, or otherwise we have problems like the gentleman that's here at Carter's Valley. So, most time it qualifies there with it, but those are just some of the things that we look at. So, we work here with the board about what roads they wish to add to the plan. Then we have a public hearing, and that's usually held somewhere around May, that we present the plan and show what we're proposing to add to it. And that gives you an opportunity to come in and see what the plan is. And also, again, like you have today, voice your desire for it to be added to the plan. So, that's kinda how that process works. The plan, we did this this past year. We actually got Snowflake added onto the plan this past year that these ladies are here for. And so, once you get added to the plan, it becomes just a matter of waiting game to, when your time rolls up on the schedule. Does take some patience. And usually everybody says, yes, we've been patient for many years. And I understand that. But the true part of it is, is getting added to that plan so that it can receive funding and in the year that it's shown for construction, and then it will be built. Sometimes, depending upon how long the road is and how much money is available, sometimes the road has to be broken into a couple of segments. When you're looking at one or two miles, then sometimes a half a mile to a mile. Just depends again on how much it's gonna cost in order for the road to be added. We do go through a process where we do go, when we're talking about adding a road to the plan, that we do an estimate in order to see how much it's gonna cost to put it into the plan there for that. So, I think I've covered it all. It's about my 30th year of doing that, so if I forgot something out of that, it's kinda like a record for me in being able to do that. So, that's there with that. As free to say Carter's Valley, Joey's been working with our traffic engineering department on taking a look at that to see if there's any justification for lowering the speed limit. That process usually takes one or two months before we have any information back on that and run it through to see what can be done. Let's see. I think I've pretty well addressed all the public's...
I believe you did.
...citizen comment portion. The other thing that I mentioned on that second page is just kinda highlight the work orders that we have had from the period of July through October. That's beginning of our fiscal year. Is the reason that I asked for us to put that on there. We typically do that by quarter. And what we're trying to report to you, we had 545 work orders that were made. Mr. Tipton was 528 of them.
(laughter)
Sorry. I just had to have a little fun there for a second, a little pause.
That means you're doing fine.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Of those, the majority of those come in, we get, we get every kinda calling. Anybody traveling down the road or see anything that, or something happens. Even some of those come from the sheriff's department when their officers see things. So, a lot of those are trees down and deers were the majority of them. With it being Scott County, with the number of gravel roads that we have, the grading of the gravel roads and dust control was the second and third most common. And actually, I believe it was a tie with the ladies back there in the back of Snowflake. We closed out 458 of those, 545, and we still have 87 of them open. A lot of times, those that remain open are tied to things like where we have to have permit reviews and things like that planned work before we get to have. Now, those are not necessarily, I will point out, 545 different roads. Sometimes it happens that they are multiple calls on multiple roads or on the same roadway. So, with that, I'm going to rest my voice for just a second. And I'm gonna ask Wade to come up and just go back to page one. He works with a lot of you there frequently. And I asked him if he'd come up and discuss the previous work requests and comments. He's been reactive with those. He does a great job. Makes my job a lot easier by handling those. Okay, go ahead, Wade.
Thanks, Alan. Hey, as Alan said, I'm Wade Belcher. I'm the assistant residency administrator. I think I know all of you all. But as Alan said, I just wanted to go over some of the specific jobs that you guys have asked about or requests that we've got over time through the board. Some of the major projects that we've had going on that, in the area, that some of them didn't come from the board, but they are some pretty large projects. Like front of VFP, we just replaced a big double line, a 60-inch pipe. That was a pretty big project for us. We had to work with the VFP on their delivery schedules and try to keep the, you know, that business moving while we replaced that. We've replaced another really large pipe, a 72-inch pipe on Route 635 Little Valley. We were gonna pave over both of those projects this week. So, if you've been getting any complaints on those needing to be patched over, that'll be completed this week.
While you're on that, I'll give a dump. And Dugannon, he put two pipes in over there and it's gravel. Are they gonna pave that too?
We're trying to get all of them patched over that we can, but we're coming up on the time when plants close, you know. So, we're pushing as hard as we can to get all of our patching and pipes that we've replaced done.
They gravel them top. I mean, how they did, but that has sunk down quite a bit. You know, where they'll do that is...
And a lot of times, what we find best is to go and let them settle a little bit before we do a paving there because you pave and then the pavement will settle down. And so, you've got to come back.
Makes sense.
What happened, these course, maybe Florida Highway?
Yeah.
One is all across the road.
Yeah, and that, I got that one coming up here to talk about that we can go ahead. You know, you had contacted me last week or the week before about some patchwork that needs to be done. They were, I was over here on Monday and they were working on AP Carter Highway. And they were going to Spring Valley. Depending on the weather, they had hoped to have it complete this week. And I think you'd asked me about one.
Spring Valley, that Fleming Road.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. That's the other one that you had asked about. They said they had hoped to have it done this week, but I think you told me before the meeting they'd already done it.
I'll check with Fleming to see if it's done.
Okay. Well, they are planning on doing that this week though. So, and then you and I had also spoke previously about ditching on AP Carter Highway, and we had been waiting on a permit. We finally got that permit in and we're trying to get that work scheduled. You know, as we were just talking about, we're currently working on trying to get all of our patching done before the plants close. So, that might be a couple of weeks out before we get to do the ditching over there. Then Roberts Creek, I know we had spoke about Roberts Creek a few times, Mr. Tipton. You know, we did some prep work, some prep patching in there to get it ready for the group to come in and overlay that. And we heard from them last week. They were hoping to get that overlaid before the end of October, but they are, they are still planning on doing it this season. So, should be anytime. Mr. Jeger, I know you had talked to Mr. Jesse from Patinsville about the GPM basket wall down in Yuma. We put that in for a permit. We're waiting a permit before we can do that work. And Mr. Jesse said that you had talked to him about another shoulder issue down in there, and they would get that fixed very soon. So, Mr. Herring's not here, but back in April, we went over, met in the field and spent the better part of the day together going over a large issue of, large number of issues. And we've addressed a large portion of those and still have work planned on several others. I know Sarah Serco has come up in board meetings in the past. We finally got the permit to replace that pipe down there at the intersection of Sarah Serco and Route 871. So, we'll be moving forward with that one soon as well. Mr. Mann, we discussed before the meeting started the issue there in Dugannon with trucks. We've got signs up with lights flashing on both the Wise County side and the Dugannon side. We've got message boards up down there around 65 on the Fort Blackmore side trying to warn trucks. And we've done some work on the curb on the Wise County side.
Yeah, they've done a good job on that curb.
Yeah. Like we were talking, a skilled truck driver can make it around to it, but, you know, some of them are still getting stuck. But it's not much else we can do there.
The one that got stuck last week in my driveway, they, that one sign is there and they tried to turn in a high center. And they know, they should know what the landing gears are on those trailers and they can't do that. And the guy told the trooper he's seven miles closer to come Route 72. That's why they're told to come that way. Well, that rotator, that truck, they had to come to get him loose at $750 an hour. So, I don't know. But he's been seven miles closer, so they paid the drivers seven miles less for driving, I guess. And then, then $750 bucks an hour to rent that, get that truck to come and get him loose and turn around.
And one other thing too, I mentioned to you there, but just for the, for the group, we've also talked with our central office. One of our contacts there has made contact with some of the mapping companies to try to ask if there is some way that they can put some kinda message or that not be a prime routing direction for trucks as well. And so, we try to take that approach as well. We work with Waze, is the group that VDOT works closest with. I think even Waze was trying to reach out to some of the others. Google and Apple try to help us as well.
Well, the signs out there flashing lights are signs. I don't know what it would take. But what happens, they use their phone, the GPS in their phone, they lose signal. And so, but you got the signs. If you don't have the signal, follow the sign. And they don't. They just, they don't. And so, anyway. And most likely, they're very inexperienced drivers too. We've encountered that, talking to them. They're just not really experienced and they don't know. They get a panic. And then they try to turn there in a high center. I don't know how many has gotten hung there in my driveway.
Yeah.
Anyway, y'all doing all you can do with it. I don't know what you could do. It's rather club than hit him in the head if he tried to go that way. The only I know to stop him, but they see the sign, they do it anyways. I don't know. But y'all doing a good job, but you have done a good job with it, so.
Thank you.
Can you put up signs that says no tractor trailers?
We, that's, we can't restrict the truck traffic. There's a lot of things that goes into a total restriction. But we do have as strong a language as we can to discourage the GPS routing and so forth that's there and not recommend.
Well, the sign says, no trucks over 30 feet.
Yeah. Well, and so, that's there. But I mean, but yeah, there's, there's issues that comes in about restrictions.
I know I've had a lot of, you know, Colonial Post Office, I've turned, I don't have any trucks down there. And they still, there are not as many as there was. But they come and put up a high sign, but the high's not the problem. It's the turns and stuff that they have to.
And that's calling through, you know, our entire area. Even, you know, we have the Route 604 that goes down toward Blackwater. We've dealt with some of the same things. We put some signs there in Duffield about GPS routing there with that. We have a primary route that's not in this area, but Route 80 from Washington County over to into Rust County. That's another area that in our district that we have lots of problems with. So, it just is difficult to try to deal with. And unfortunately, no matter how many signs and everything put up, that you end up having one or two that just doesn't obey that. And they go, and then that causes an impact inconvenience to everyone.
Okay, I think I've addressed a lot of the specific requests from you all. We are gonna be, these weren't requests from anybody, but in case you have any complaints on them, we're gonna be doing some hand patching on Route 23, 614, and Alley Valley, Route 619. We'll be doing those hopefully before the plant closes and gets potholes filled. We've got some ditching planned on several routes, Route 72, you know, up through Dugannon, up the mountain. We're gonna be ditching up that way. And then AP Carter Highway, as we discussed earlier. And then Blue Maxon, we're gonna try to do a lot of brush cutting this winter. I know everybody's seeing now the roads are starting to tunnel in in the summertime. So, we're really gonna try to do as much brush cutting this winter as we can to help out next summer. So, does anybody have any specific issues that they wanna bring up or discuss?
Wade, if you don't mind, I've got a couple of things real quick. We had Otis Bowen from Mount Duffield, lives on top of Powell Mountain. He came in here a couple months ago. And I don't know if this involves Lee County or Scott, but if you come up the new construction from Lee County, if you're in the outside lane, you have to come over into one lane, right at the turnoff that you go down the mountain to where Otis lives. And there's a section there. He says if you, they farm in Lee County, he says if you come up and switch over into the left-hand lane, people are flying up through there. Then they need a turnoff lane down to that road. And I don't know the road number that comes up from Lee County and turns right down through there.
We've, we've looked at it. I've asked our traffic folks to look at it. And with the accident data and everything, they've not found any justification at this time for there to be any turn lane installed. And it would require, you know, another project just kinda, you know, being put into a plan somewhere to, in order to ever even do that. Similar like building the, you know, the turn lanes or the climbing lane that was there. So, it's a very small likelihood that that could ever be done.
Okay.
Slide distance and everything's checked out there. The merge lanes are there. It's one of those things, kind of like sometimes, like if driver error is there, then how, how do you correct, you know, driver error? And so, I'm sorry, unfortunately, our traffic folks told us that that doesn't look like an option at this time.
Okay, appreciate that. And I wanna thank you for Sarah Serco and Mox and Gap. But where are we on the intersection out here at the east end, west end of town? Food line?
Food line? I'll have to check on that one and get back to you.
Okay, all right.
I know Food Line had called in a work order here recently too. So, I'm in the process to check on that one anyway. And I'll get back to you.
I just a quick question, Wade, and maybe you can answer. The side streets in Dugannon are horrible shape. Do you all do that? Is that, I mean, they're...
If they've got a route number on them.
Yeah, well, they do. They're just, I mean, they're really, really bad. All of them are.
As far as drainage or...
No potholes in the traffic. The pavement is broken up and just practically gone in a lot of places. So, all the side streets there, as you hear, one of them's right there. I don't know if the mayor reached out to y'all or not, but...
We haven't heard from him, but I'll get with the folks at Fort Blackmore and we'll get it addressed.
Wade, I know we talked about the Anne Good Cooper Road to be paved.
Yeah.
That was planned, I think, for this, this summer past. And if you can let the folks know what the, what the plan is on that.
That one, kinda like Spurlock Hollow, we've got some preliminary engineering done on that and have a plan and have it put in for a permit. But unfortunately, it'll probably be next summer before we begin construction on that one.
So, that's what the people wanna hear, 'cause they were expecting, you know, this past summer. So, a phone call, you know, without it is... past summer, so a phone call, you know, without it is...
Yeah. Unfortunately, it'll probably be next year before we begin the construction on that one.
Do you have any idea on that 713, when that environmental permit?
Environmental permits used to take around 30, 45 days. They've gotten a little longer now, sometimes 45 to 60 days, but that can depend too on if there's any endangered species in near, in the area or, you know, if we're gonna have to be working actually in the water, if we're gonna have to build a coffer dam, so it can, it can kind of depend, but I would say somewhere around 60 days or so.
If that wall falls in, it's gonna dam that whole creek up along there, through there. It'll probably get over the road, 'cause there's a five-foot pipe there that comes through it and then it's eating all that rock, eating up under that rock, and all that rock's already fell two foot, so it's gonna fall pretty soon. Big Range is gonna finish washing it out and it's gonna tunnel in the creek and it'll back the whole water up if it...
And one thing I could do is talk to our environmentalists and have, have them move that to the, you know, like priority, to the top of the list ahead of anything else she's working on. And that, that could help speed it up some, but there's usually a 60-day turnaround anymore to get a permit.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And I just have one for Mr. Sumpil probably, since he's here. I know we've talked, this will be the 529th ride. The Blue Bell, I would wait for, ask about this before, many times, the Blue Bell Drive on East Carter Valley. And they've come out and you may have some record of that, Fred, for... I think there was some emails exchanged possibly about what the county might need to do or whatever to try to make that a go.
That was, if I'm remembering correctly, that's a county road that you were wanting to get brought into the system, is that right? Yeah.
Yeah, they've been trying for years to get it brought into the system. And the road is plenty wide enough, it's paved, I mean, it's a good, to me, it's a good project, a lot of houses in there. And, you know, when the snows come, there's no plows, we don't bypass them and they have to do their own thing, you know, so.
Just a matter, you know, we really don't have much money for, you know, the rural additions, but we'll, we'll, I'll try to take another updating look, see where that stands.
Definitely could, 'cause I mean, the pavement's already there, I mean, I couldn't see you guys going in and ripping up, you know, what's already there. They've done an excellent job there. I think, I don't know if it's Joey or somebody, one of the engineers has come out, you know, have looked at that, I think.
Earlier this year, it looks like the estimate was about 332,000 of what it would take to bring that road up to standards, to take it into the system.
And if I'm not mistaken, you have to have that in your rural addition program, right?
Yes, you have to be able to use that and that's something that as far as it goes, I know we haven't done really this much around here, but there are options. Like you can, you can use many of your six-year plan, but that takes from the road, it's already in the system, so that's really not that desirable effect. And then, what a lot of counties, similar to, you know, size and everything, Scott County, do is apply for revenue sharing match. And so then, state matches half the money and then the county matches the other half. And I could get into a real big thing there, but even some counties do things like put like a special tax district in place to recoup that, like over, kind of add on to their tax assessment for, you know, if they want to try to come up with the county's match that I have like that. And I know that scares everybody when you start mentioning that kind of thing that's there, but those are just options that are out there. But in other words, there, there has to be like a county match to do the, that. And that really is about the quickest as far as timing to be able to try to get any kind of money to do, to do a project like that.
Well, I know it won't happen or not, I know there wanted to, like yesterday, but many yesterdays ago, but yeah, if you could look in and see what is the best approach to have, we'd appreciate it.
I know there's been quite a few work orders written for Hill Springs.
Hill Springs?
Hill Springs Road out in Midland. Now, the way that that road is, they've, you know, they've put down gravel on that, but there's certain places on that road where the road is curved and the ditch lines are horrible. And the, with, you know, that now we've got the trees and the leaves falling and now we're gonna have, you know, the snow's coming, it's just gonna create a bigger mess than what's already there. Somebody could get in there, I mean, I know there's work orders been put in for that to clean up those ditch lines, but that really, really, really help.
Okay.
There's a few, there's, all the way through there, I mean, there's, you know, there's, there's a, where that, where the road isn't dished properly, where the road goes into my, my husband's farm.
Yeah.
There's probably a four-foot rut down into his field from where the runoff from the road has created the trench. So they'll come and they'll put down the gravel, but when it rains, it just washes it all into the field.
Okay.
So, if we could look at those ditch lines, that would be great.
Okay, I'll, I'll get a grader out there, work the ditches.
The ditches is, I mean, the grader's gonna be good, but I think the ditches is gonna...
Well, a lot of times they ditch with the grader.
Okay.
They use, they use the grader blade to cut a ditch a lot of times.
There's a, and there's a few places down through that road, or down through there, where the, there's a pipe in the ground or, you know, drainage pipe.
Yeah.
That's stopped up, so maybe clean those out.
Yeah.
Maybe. That would really, really, I think, help and improve that, in my opinion. I mean, I think that's, they could take a look at it, I think that would be most appreciated. That one, and then, I had a lady call me yesterday about Spring Valley Circle.
Okay.
Haven't had a chance to, to put a work order in on that one yet. It's over here off of Blott Loade.
What was the complaint?
Just on patching the, there's a, there's a lot of potholes, things like that, maybe if we can get some attention put onto that, that'd be great. I haven't had a chance to put a work order in, we're hurrying it.
Okay, I'll try to have them add that to this other list of routes that they're gonna try to patch before that plant plants close. But with this morning's weather, I mean, the plants could close any day now, and we don't know when that's gonna be, so.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll try to get all those addressed before winter time.
It's warming up next week.
If, if not, we can put some cold patch in on until the asphalt plants open like up, so.
Anything else? Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much for the time. I know it's been a little bit of length to it, but I hope it's productive for us to be here. I know this may be the last trip, some of you may not, I think, may conclude your turns here. And appreciate working with you. And need anything, let us know, okay?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I've got your email ready.
Calling back to order. Next item is the Virginia Department of Transportation Smart Scale Project in the Star, do you would? We went over that in our briefing on the agenda, so if you would, man.
We have two projects from the Bristol District that we've been looking at to develop smart scale projects for next, next round, which will be next year. There's two intersections that are very similar. They're Route 65, Clinch River Highway and US 23, and Route 871, Natural Tunnel Parkway and US 23. The Natural Tunnel Parkway intersection rank is six out of 30 in the Bristol District and the Clinch River Highway ranks 18 out of 30 of the intersections that they have been looking at with all the localities about smart scale applications. Both of these are on your tablet, you have pictures of the intersections, all the signs that are currently located at those intersections, and crash data's included as well. So hopefully you've had a time to take a look at all those. They are looking at some different scenarios of what could be done to improve both intersections. They just wanted me to bring these before you to see if you prefer one intersection over the other and if you would be interested in them doing a deeper dive into one or both of the intersections to help develop our smart scale application for next year. So if you've had a chance to review them, if you've got any questions for me, just let me know and I'll do my best to answer those. I do know that there's been a lot of accidents lately at the Natural Tunnel Parkway intersection. The week that I met with VDOT, there was three in that one week that wouldn't be included in your crash data. So, we do have a lot of accidents there at Natural Tunnel Parkway and 23.
Crazy.
To do this, we need to vote on, on continuing the stadium, I think, on both projects and that was sort of what we talked about when we had our pre-agenda meeting back last week. So anyway, your all's thoughts on this, proceed with both, is it what we didn't do in the Star, and proceed with both projects?
Yeah, one or both, if you have a preference.
I think we should do both, your all's thoughts on this?
I think we should do both, for sure.
Yeah.
Anything we can do to protect.
Yeah. I realize there at, at Natural Tunnel Parkway, which is that big a deal, but apparently it is, I guess with speed limit of 60, people want to do a patch of that through there and then people pulling out and so on. But anyway, both projects, I think, would be the best way to go for this smart scale project, so any discussion with that, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to do that.
I think when you pull out from Natural Tunnel Park, you got two situations. You got one going up the hill, that's what we talked about yesterday, right?
Right.
And then possibility of, I think you mentioned maybe another, what do you call it?
Merge lane.
Yeah, merge lane. That way, then of course, if you go across and go left, go back toward Gate City, people probably feel like it's in a center lane in order to get in right there, it's not good. And that, that's what we ought to work on. I think that, that's a higher number personally, I mean, I think that's one we should work We did a little bit of talking about the other one yesterday. I think Mike, Mike has some comments on that one, I don't know, if you want to share with us.
Well, both, both places, if you look at them, Natural Tunnel's got a lot of campers coming out of there and you turn left, come toward Kingsport, it's, it's dangerous. Whereas Clinchport is, is basically the same way, turning left, you're in a curve and like you say, they're doing 65 down through there. But there's buses at both places and, and you gotta take that into account. There are no merging lanes and there's no exit lanes. These maps that Fredo were in here were as confusing to me as anything I've seen. On both places, the highway department has, has got a plan where if you're coming up from Clinchport or coming down from Natural Tunnel, you, you turn right to go to Kingsport.
They're called R-cuts.
Yes.
Is what the intersection improvement they're looking at, but that's not set in stone yet. So coming out of Clinchport or Natural Tunnel, you would take a right toward Duffield. For the Clinchport, for example, you would go to Fairview Road and do the U-turn and go back toward Gate City. If you were coming from Duffield to go to Rock Cove, you would have to go down to Red Wine Hollow and do the same thing, do the U-turn and back up the four lane to turn down Route 65. So that's what an R-cut is, but they don't think those would be the ideal situation for these two intersections.
I don't think it would either.
I think VDOT needs to scrap that in front.
I'll let them know that.
Exit, exit lanes at both places, if you're coming out of Clinchport or Natural Tunnel, if you had an exit lane to go out into, to go toward Big Stone, or merging lanes to go toward Kingsport from either one, if you had a merging lane to pull over into to go south, instead of having to pull, to pull to an inside lane, I think that'd make more sense than those other two.
At Route 65, where the river goes along with the road and then on 23 as well, right there, you don't have a lot of room to expand the width. That was one of the things that we had discussed in the VDOT meeting. And of course, the creek would be the same situation at Natural Tunnel Parkway. It's hard to, you know, you've got a steep drop off on one side and the creek on the other side of the four lane, so it's hard to adjust your width there. But the problem at Natural Tunnel Parkway and Clinchport, it looks like you've got enough room to hold in the middle, but you really don't, you're sticking out in the road.
Right. Signage too, VDOT had mentioned in these papers, more signage and they definitely need more signs down there to alert people to what they're coming to, maybe even reduce the speed limit a little on both places.
Well, there Bill Shaw, you see the width of the center there where you pull out, it would be wide enough, you know, for a car, unless you pull a camper out there.
That's Clinchport there, isn't it?
This is...
That's the same.
Yeah. I see black marks there where somebody did some sliding or looks like.
Yeah, there's a lot of ricks there.
Yeah. And if they have signage too, in the meantime, why don't just get people, campers, go onto the red light in Duffield and come out of the, the campground area, go on, just go to Duffield to the red light.
Didn't they mention going on at the old road, Natural Tunnel Road to Duffield, Fredo?
Yes, but the campers can't make that cut coming off of Natural Tunnel Hill.
Exactly, yeah.
It's hard enough for a car to go back toward the red light, let on a camper.
There's definitely need more studies, though, it needs to be.
And that's what we would decide to, you know, just to, you know, proceed with more studies on this, what we decided here today.
Just hope they don't end up like the one, how many of you went to Boons Creek?
Yeah, it's ongoing.
I think they were, I think they were doing something like this right here when they were, they were doing that. I was just on that again this week, it's just...
It's kind of like that 407 exit in the codec as well.
Yeah.
Same design.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need our VDOT to do something similar to that, so...
Well, we'll entertain a motion to proceed with the stadium in both these projects, if that's okay to everybody, is that what we want to do?
Like what Mike said, scrap, scrap the...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll let them know that.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion and we can go ahead and, and let them do a study.
Okay, alright. Mr. Ricky's made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, Ms. Good second, any discussion? All party members saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 10, the town of Duffield, their boundary lines, letters on that, Mr. Star, send that, Mr. Star, if you would.
Let me find that, please. Our mapping technician took a look at the request that we received from the town council of Duffield to look at the boundary lines. And from what she found, there was not a survey done at the time the town was chartered. And she has reviewed the tax map and she thinks it closely represents the town boundary as it was written in the charter in 1894, as well as the town boundary adjustment approved by the Circuit Court in 2004. So we have, I formulated a letter for your consideration to the town of Duffield recommending if they wish the boundary line to be adjusted as outlined in the Code of Virginia, that we recommend the town complete a land survey and a request be made from the results of that survey to adjust the town boundary. When it was adjusted in 2004, a feasibility study was completed by Leno Wisco. A similar study may be of interest to the town regarding this proposed boundary adjustment.
So, we need to vote on approval, send this letter, correct?
Yes, unless you have discussion, if you want to add anything else to the letter or change anything with it, that's just a draft for your review.
Anybody have any issues with the letter?
No, I'll make a motion and we send the letter.
Alright, Ms. Good made a motion, we send it, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Star, you have a second, any discussion? All party members saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, so good job on that, Mr. Star. Next item is the Appalachian Community Action Planning Grant Application. Mr. Martin's here, so if you want to comment, speak to us, we'll sack him out, we'll, we'll talk about it, if you want to come. How you doing today?
I'm doing fine, thank you.
Good to see you this morning.
Good morning, I'm Lee Sartor, and I'm the executive director for Appalachian Community Action. And we have doubled our budget and almost our workforce in the past five years and we're outgrowing all of our current spaces. We serve Lee County, Scott County, Wise County, the city of Norton, and also Dixon County for weatherization. We've got an office in Lee County, we've got an office in, in Gate City, and we have a warehouse in Duffield and we're also... in Duffield, and we're also opening a new office this week in Duffield for our weatherization housing director and our energy auditors, because we have just outgrown the spaces that we have. Our agency has the opportunity to grow by leaps and bounds, but right now we're prohibited with the spaces that we have. What we would like to do is move all of our operations to Duffield, which is centrally located for the whole area. And we have found a piece of property in Duffield, this, the people that we are working with have asked us not to name who they are at this point in time, because it still isn't operating business, but it's a great opportunity for our agency. What we are asking for is for you all to grant us the authority to have this planning grant, to make sure that, number one, we can afford it, you know, that it's the best thing for our agency to do, and how much it's going to cost to renovate this current building plus build a warehouse on the adjacent land with it. So we do appreciate your approval today. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer you.
Ms. Good and I both serve on that board and they have grown a lot and it's been really an honor to be on that board and you've done a good job, Liz, as you really have. So you talked about retiring in a year or two, so they may not let you.
Well, I hope, I hope so, thank you.
You've done a good job, you really have, and so, and we're afraid that she was there too, so she knows the ins and outs of Apka, so.
Well, it's a great agency that does a lot for all the people of Southwest Virginia. And, you know, my mother worked for that agency back during the 70s. And I want to continue to see it to grow and to flourish and to help all the people of Southwest Virginia.
That's what the R E D A, I guess that was, yeah.
Yeah, I used to work with R E D A many years ago.
Wow, thank you.
All right, we need a motion to approve this planning grant application, do we have a motion, do I think Ms. Good?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Good makes a motion too, do we approve this, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky's second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried, so we get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, all right. Next item is the animal friendly license plate funds, Ms. Barnes, if you would.
We have this request yearly, we receive funds from the state for a portion of the license plates that are offered through the Department of Motor Vehicles for the animal friendly license plate. And in the past, we have usually gave that money to the animal, or the Scott County Humane Society, and I believe this year it's $210 that we will be looking at.
I'll make the motion, we give the 210 to the Scott County Humane Society.
All right. Ms. Agnes made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried. All right, moving on. Next item, item 13, establish a capitalization threshold with $20,000 for G A S B Implementation Guide 2021-1, questions, 5.1A, Ms. Barnes.
Yes, I'm asking to establish our capitalization threshold, moving that from $5,000, which was established by board motion in 2011, to $20,000 for the governmental accounting standard board capitalization threshold. I would like for that to be made active July 1st, 2023, if it's your desire to implement this threshold at $20,000.
With that, we entertain a motion to do this, Ms. Barnes, the request, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Ricky made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
She has a second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is bookkeeping, item 14.
Please appropriate $32,760.29 to Information Systems Computer Programming Services 1,000-12610-403128 for reimbursement received and deposited to treasurer's office.
All right, do we have a motion appropriation describing Ms. Vickers?
Some motion. Wait, I'll second.
All right, Ms. Good made a motion, Mr. Tipton's second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is our county attorney items, so Ms. Kegler, you have it, of course.
Hello, how do you think today?
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Kegler? Next item is the county magistrate item, got claims, so Ms. Barnes.
Your green sheet is in your packet. General fund balance after the November claims is $5,335,807.74. You can see from the chart, we are quite a bit ahead of this timeline this year, but that was because of the delayed tax tickets. If you look compared to fiscal year '22, we're pretty well right in line where we were at that time. As far as claims for the month, over 5,000 is on the back sheet. Some of the larger ones, just to point out, Atlantic Election Services, that's for printing of election ballots, $11,060.94. Waste Management, invoice for the month was $39,270.93. Addington Oil Company, $13,402.52. PD1, third or second quarter contribution, $15,343.50. Scott County Life Saving Crew, part of their fiscal year '24 allocation, $40,000. And of course, the big one, Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority Quarterly Payment, And Tyler Technologies Training, $18,500, training and implementation. So claims for the month, early sets total, $158,210.29. Claims, $766,824.73. So total for the month that needs approving is $925,35.2.
I'll make a motion, will we pay the claims for the month? The amount, $925.35, two p's.
You got it. All right, Ms. Agnes made a motion to pay the bill, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ricky's second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried.
I do want to talk about one thing though on here. I noticed that we have a new accounts up here on the top for, I'm assuming for this is the local government investment pool. Is that new?
It's not.
It's not? Is that the investment?
The CD is new, the one at the bottom.
The CD is new, okay.
Yes, that shows the $1 million CD.
We did the $1 million CD through the treasurer's office, right? Okay, that's an investment, so just so folks know, she just started that, so just so folks know that. That is new.
The $1,700, that has been there a long time, hasn't it?
Yeah, that amount's been there untouched for many years. That is the local government investment pool, that amount has not changed, I don't think, since I've been here.
Yeah. It's been there a long time, I think, it's not.
It has been.
It's been many, many years, more than 12. All right, thank you.
Who wants to say the address for getting that CD?
5.25, I believe.
Oh, for the 11 months?
No, it's six months.
Oh, six months.
When did that become effective? Do you remember? Was that last, was that just now?
Around the 1st of October, I believe.
Around the 1st of October.
Is that part of this, this could have been done?
12 years ago.
Oh, no.
But, I digress, sorry, just.
Well, we've got a lot of better than that, so.
I just want to call attention to that, because that is important.
All right, thanks, Ms. Barnes.
That's all I have under claims. I do have miscellaneous things.
Got it.
The first is a couple of holidays that are coming up, that the state has granted half days. In the past, the board has considered giving four extra holiday hours for the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and closing the offices all day. And this year, the Friday before Christmas, the state's given four hours on Friday, and I was going to see if the board would be willing to consider closing the office that Wednesday before Thanksgiving and the Friday before Christmas, or none of the days, or maybe one of them. So just for your consideration, I wanted to mention that.
We've done that in the past, so it's worked out pretty good, and a high today, usually not a good productive day, I think it'd be worth it to let employees have an extra four hours each holiday, so it'll be eight hours total extra leave time for those two holidays. All right.
I'll make a motion, we do that, Nettie.
All right, Ms. Good made a motion on that.
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And next, I would like to get authorization to advertise for a public hearing to amend the fiscal year '24 budget at the December, I believe that's sixth board meeting. We have received the updated numbers that the school system will be getting, and we've got some new account codes, revenue and expense codes that need to be set up, so we can take care of all that in one amendment.
I think in the first budget, we approved 5%, raise, and the state did 7, so we got a, as part of it, we got to account for.
The compensation board employees will get the extra too, will have to adjust that. The school system gets an extra too, so that'll be part of their budget.
That's my thought.
Yeah, county staff stays the same.
Yeah, okay. I want to make sure we got that, there was for the school systems and it was 7% incentive fund and the comp board employees. All right, any motion to approve this public hearing in December? So move, Mr. Jarron. All right, Mr. Ricky made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Good's second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion passed.
And I also have a request to waive the permit fees for the town of Nicholsville to construct the farmer's market. This is a joint project between Scott County and Nicholsville. That would be $90 for the building permit and $20 for the electrical permit.
Okay, who did all the one, motion carried?
Yes.
Both will be $110 total?
I'll make the motion.
All right.
To waive this, $90 and $20.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Good's second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried, so.
And one more thing, I just wanted to give you an update on the tree on Elliott Drive that the lady came last month, or maybe month before last and spoke about. That tree has been removed, the limbs have been removed, the trunk is still there, but per the original agreement with the landowner, anything that wouldn't fit in the chipper could stay, so that's what has taken place.
Have been who paid for it?
AEP had Esplunda do the tree.
Okay.
It wasn't a dead tree, was it?
Yes, dead.
Oh, so, okay.
All right.
Very large tree.
Was the tree cut down on the ground?
No, the trunk's there, it's like the big tall trunk, but all of the limbs are cut off.
That'll be a concern later on.
All right, thank you, it's good to hear.
So that's all I have under miscellaneous.
All right. Okay, next item is item 17, Ms. Cox is here, she's curious, so Ms. Pan, if you would.
Good morning. So, good morning, it's Thanksgiving, as in it's the month of Thanksgiving, and I always like to say thank you to board of supervisors for all of the time that you've given, and I know, I know that it's not easy to be a volunteer official, it's not a job that I would particularly want, because I'm not nice enough, so, anyway, so I do appreciate all of your time and all of your service, and I hope to see you soon. You've got to start me. So I don't have anything to share, and it's just, you know, a general, that is like, in the very, that should go all the way back. Okay, so, okay, so we'll start out first with the events. They did do Train Day again this year without a train. Unfortunately, I'm not exactly sure why the railroad has decided not to provide a train. I think it is a big deal really for them to even get, to allow them to walk through the tunnel, but they still had, they still had a lot of attendance there, folks still like to walk through the tunnel and see it, because it isn't something that, you know, you can just walk down and see every day. The town of Gate City did a back-to-school bash, and they get a lot of supplies, a lot of the merchants join in, and they give a lot away to the school kids, and I mean, anybody from Scott County can come, I mean, they don't check to see where you all are from or anything, but a lot of those kids got their backpacks filled up and everything's donated. So that is a great event that they do for, that the merchants do and Gate City Frontier does for Scott County. Duffield Days, I wasn't at Duffield Days this year, I had, something I had to do with my child. Jeff was there as 250 and represented us for the 250 celebrations, so thank him for that, and we'll give a little, a report about that a little bit later. Papa Joe Smitty, and I will tell you that there has been, I serve on the Papa Joe Smitty Mountain Music Fest, I have ever since I started this job, 11, 12 years ago, and there was a concern with the folks that run Duffield Days, that, you know, in the very beginning, when they started the Papa Joe Smitty Mountain Music Fest, it was always associated with Duffield Days. And there was a very unkind, nasty email that was, not email, but Facebook post, that said that they, that Duffield Days had nothing to do with Papa Joe Smitty, which was untrue. That we did, Nana Katrin did talk to folks at Duffield Days and did explain it, and they said that they no longer want to be associated with Papa Joe Smitty. And it has to do with, they said, a liability issue, that if I'm not, that's their reasoning. So we have agreed to, in any of the promotional material that goes forward with Papa Joe Smitty, it will not contain that it is a part of Duffield Days, which is regrettable, but, you know, that is their wish, it's, you know, Kenny Fannin is no longer with us, it's a different group of people running that, so, but Papa Joe Smitty, I don't know if any of you all have ever been, but this year it was the absolute best concert that they've done, and I've been going for 12 years, so they just did an excellent job this year. The Carterfold Annual Festival, this, it never, it always seems to amaze me what items get the most views on Facebook. And I think, if I can figure out, so, the guy who's clawing up here, Chris Mackey, he apparently is the world champion clawer, and I didn't know that when I first saw him clawing, but, I don't know if he's going to have to run all the way through or not, but anyway, so, I'll go back to it. That post has received well over 3 million views, so, I mean, it's gone viral, it's like probably, and it's, and people still continue to comment on it. And that's been, you know, several months ago, so, you know, I guess I'll just have to watch and see when he comes again and, you know, video. to watch and see when he comes again, and, you know, videotape him, so I was just kind of amazed, but, so, that, she had a good, she had a good show, and as many of you, many of you all may know, they're coming upon their 50th year anniversary next year. And they have been awarded $500,000 from the General Assembly. And I understand that perhaps there will be some matching funds from Tennessee for the Carter Fold, and they do have some big things in the making with that, and I think it's supposed to be a secret, so, my lips were sealed, believe it or not, someone should have never told me, but, it's really hard, so hopefully, hopefully all that comes to fruition, and if it does, it will be absolutely phenomenal for the Carter Fold and for Scott County. You know, it's, they do do a nice job there, and I think it's my understanding that the funds will not be allocated through to, through to the Carter Fold, that it will be administered by Virginia Tourism Corporation. The town of Gate City had their Harvest Moon Celebration in September, and that's always a nice little community event. Everybody comes out, and I don't know, this was, this was the last event that Cotton Roberts was at, worked, and I'm sure all of you all know the passing of Cotton, and I think November the sixteenth at the Town Council, they're going to honor him at Gate City, so if you all can come to that, I think it starts at 6:30, that would be a good thing to do, but, you know, they had, he, he put a great deal of heart and effort into the revitalization of downtown Gate City. Also during that event, they did a blue ribbon contest, and Linda Skelton, the lady who is the cookbook lady, she was there, she sold her cookbooks, and they did some nice judging, they had some very interesting things that were submitted, so they went around and did that. We set up a tea party for the Harvest Moon Celebration, and we, we have paid, we paid, well, we didn't pay her for this, but we did, I'll show you the next one. Pamela Eddy, and she worked for Cumberland Gap National Park, and she is a certified historic, I mean, reenactor, she is great, she's phenomenal. And Jeff, everybody was dressed up, his wife, bless her heart, I think, I'm sure she probably had a cramp in her hand from face painting all day long, but they set up the alleyway to look like a tea room, and we had a lot of great response. They could actually taste teas associated with the time with colonial period. I had some, it was a little bit, I drink tea every day, it was a little bit too smoky for me, too heavy for me. And then the next weekend, we set up and did the Authentic Boston Tea Party at the Daniel Boone Wilderness Road Interpretive Center. And we ended up probably with, excuse me, about maybe twenty-six people, sorry, we could have, we, our hope was to sell twenty, you know, fifty tickets. We could not have handled fifty people. I was exhausted, and she did such an excellent job and did kind of a little reenactment of what was going on during the time of the Boston Tea Party, you know, how the people were feeling and things like that, and served teas and let people choose which side they were on, whether they were loyalist or, you know, with the king's men or whatever. So she did a really good job, and we will be working with her throughout the Virginia 250 to do some other things. And we've, we've talked about them, but we don't have anything down pat yet. Bushmilk Days, they had Bushmilk Days, the, I don't know the reason, but the Anabaptists didn't participate with them this year, so they just did the Aurora Tent, but, I mean, you know, the Bushmilk Days, I mean, it's great. They did the Cloud Splitter 100, Kelly Begley and her sister, they did such a phenomenal job setting up that tent and working that aid station down there. I can't thank them enough.
I bet, I'm sorry, how come he's not running that one again?
Yeah, you'll have to ask him.
Where did he go? I figured it was tough.
It is tough, and, and they come...
He might have been running up from Norton up to the High Knob, back several times.
Several times, well, you come through...
Nighttime, daytime, string crossing.
Yeah, you come through the Devil's Backside at night.
Yeah, I think it was 100 string crossing.
Yeah. I couldn't do it.
How many participated in that?
Probably about 125.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, from, I mean, from all over the country. It's, it's qualifier for a race that they have in the house, so, you know, we had asked her, we've asked her several times, the race coordinator, to move the, move the aid station down to the parking lot there at Stone Creek, but the pacing and the distance is regulated, so she'd have to, it'd be a lot of work for her to have to reconfigure the race and everything to come down there. They did King Alleywing this year, and you might recognize, that's Lou from the courthouse. They, everybody set up, and I have never in my entire life seen so many people in downtown Gate City that night. I mean, I was just, it got so, it got so crowded that I had to leap. I mean, it was one of those things that, you know, it was a sensory overload, and when I left, I went back down, I went back up, you know, behind the jail, and on Mamford Road, they were lined all the way up between down that road and around to come into King Alleywing. It was amazing. You know, a lot of folks participated, the courthouse participated, Scott County, you all participated, and you won the, the, didn't you win the... Yeah, yeah, it was great. So they won the best, what do you call it? Adly? Display, whatever, it was great, they were, you know, I'm not real, I'm not real good with pop culture, and at first I didn't get it, and they were set up, it had a Taylor Swift, and I'm like, I don't quite get this, but then somebody explained it to me, so it was very, very clever, very well done. So then I was like, oh, so I get it. Tourism awards, so we, this year, this was the second year that they had, that Friends of Southwest Virginia had done Tourism Awards, and so the first year, I didn't submit anything. And so this past year, that was actually the day, that was actually supposed to have been my last day tour. I, you know, I wasn't good to go, but then, of course, you know, I changed my mind and decided not to retire, so we submitted one of our videos. And so we won an award for the longest video with a tourism budget of $50,000 or less. And then I also submitted the Carter Family Fold with their best new venue, it should say website, 'cause we had a new website made for them instead of video. But, and that's what the, that's what the awards look like. I would have brought, would have brought it in here, but, so, it's kind of heavy, but it's sitting in there in my office, if you want to come by and see it. So, you know, I was real tickled that we won it. We'll submit, we'll, we'll submit something again next year, too. So there's some new Scott County businesses, and I think maybe I talked about Coon and Fox Face Net last, last time, but I always, if there's somebody new, I always try to do a little blog story, and it's on our website, and then I attach it to the Facebook page, and that gives them, and you can see, you know, how many people went and checked that out and everything, and it just gives them good engagement, brings good engagement into our Facebook page and also our website. And then the other one was the 58 Metal Works and 58 Flowers Talk. And so the husband, Sam, is a blacksmith, and he sells his wares in Southern Collective. And then she does flowers, and her flowers are absolutely beautiful, so we did a story on them. Ribbon cuttings, the only ribbon cutting that we had this year was, well, this quarter, was Maple Tree Used Books and Coffee Shop. If you all haven't gone in there, you need to check it out, it's wonderful. I can't go in there, 'cause I spend a lot of money on books, I spend a lot of money on books anyway, so, but they've done a really good job with that. And we have got, we have received some great television coverage, and I hope that you all have seen the story that Blue Ridge PBS did on Scott County, they did an excellent job. It's still on there if you want to watch it. We had a nice, we had a nice interview with Daytime Tri-Cities. They came and explored, they were at Maple Tree Book Shop, and then they went to Natural Tunnel and went caving. I did not go caving, that is not something that I particularly enjoy, I could do that on my own property, so, you know, I don't quite do that on the caves. Has anybody ever seen that movie, The Descent? If you've ever seen it, you'll know what I'm talking about, has two different endings, and it's all about these caves in Appalachia, and the creatures that live within those caves. And so, and I mean, I have all of these caves on my property, and every time, you know, when I take the dogs for a walk, and I'm coming back out, and looking around to make sure that those creatures haven't crawled out, so I have a way overactive imagination.
They'll keep an eye on them.
Oh, God, these are, these are creeping creatures.
There were a lot of people underground back in the day. We had one mine that was down eighteen hundred feet, almost to sea level, and you go for twenty miles underground in the coal mines.
Did you go?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, God.
I inspected those mines.
Oh, man.
Four hundred feet above sea level. You know what's ironic about it, down there, in those fossils, plant life, you can see evidence of it in the roof and stuff, where it was alive one day, but eighteen hundred feet of rock over your head.
Well, I've got plenty of caves, if anybody wants to crawl around in a mine.
Right now, about 500 people working that one mine.
Oh, that just creeps me out. So, just a couple of noteworthy things. Friends of Southwest Virginia did an economic impact study and showed that you've had $1.2 billion in direct economic spending in their region, and their region, if you know, goes on up, and it's not just part of Southwest Virginia, so, so that's good. I encourage folks from around here to enter the scenic Virginia business contest, and I hope to see, you know, some winners, 'cause there are some extremely talented photographers here, and, you know, some beautiful scenery here, too, so I hope they, and I know a lot of people did submit photos. The Swingin' Bridge, Angles Way, was reopened, I did that, VDOT. And, you know, I think that post, when it was closed, it had about 300,000 views. People really, a Swingin' Bridge is iconic. There aren't that many Swingin' Bridges that are still open, but I think this was, this one was opened, I think it was, I think it was the first of October. Yeah, it was the Bushmilk Days, it's when I went back down to, to Knoxville, I noticed that it had been reopened, so it had just been, it had just been reopened, and I would, you know, I live at the, at the edge of my property, so I see a lot of people that go down there, and they were all very disappointed, you know, that it wasn't open this year, and I'm a guy doing it, so I wasn't gonna take any blame for that. Anyway, media, we've done real good this year, pre-publicity, we're about 215,000. Social media, you know, we've got, we've gotten some great, great posts and everything. I'm sorry. That's just another one of those things where that's an Instagram reel that I'm still, I'm still trying to work on, trying to get that Instagram up, but I don't know, it doesn't, I don't seem to be able to conquer that as well as I have Facebook, been able to get followers and everything. The weekly newsletter, that just keeps growing, the, I mean, I get about a 32% open rate on that, and that's really good considering most of them are about 16%. And upcoming, so these are the upcoming events, Santa Train, Gate City, Christmas Open House, lighting of the tunnel, they're doing that a little bit different this year, they're not going to be open the full week before Christmas because of the way that school calendar falls, but they will have special nights, and I think I have a post coming up on that. The Carter Fold, last show for the season will be November the 25th, the Gate City Christmas Parade. We had talked about doing, about being in the Gate City Christmas Parade as VA 250. We have not yet made a determination as to whether or not we're gonna participate in that. The Nicholsville Parade is the third on Sunday, and I will tell you that the Kingsport Times News is bringing their Farm Expo back, and they're going to Metaview instead for the last two years, that being at Bristol Motor Speedway. We've not participated, because that's just too, too far for us to go. And I had the date on, they're doing that, I think it's like March the 16th, so I did tell them that we would participate this year, and generally, you know, I let my, my venues come, and they bring whatever they want to, so, and they can sell while they're there. The, the main thing that I want to try to work on next year for that coming year is an agritourism trail for Scott County. You know, I know that we're considered an outdoor, but when you think about it, I mean, you know, agriculture is the main economic force here, and I've met some with Scott Gerald, trying to set up another meeting, and then tried to get with all of, all of the folks that would probably be involved. We can go ahead and set up the trail, but what I'd really like to do is, in May, is to do a event, an event at Mann Farms or somewhere near Mann Farms, that's a ticketed event to introduce the trail and serve strawberries and cream. You know, strawberries from Mann Farms, and then the fresh cream from Nash Creamery, and just, you know, try to tie it all together. I've been talking with the folks, with Becky Purdy and Kim Short on doing a regional agritourism trail and trying to figure out what to name that. It would be wonderful if we could do, figure out two events to do, so that you get people to spend the night in the county, like if we do something on Saturday with strawberries and cream, and then on Sunday, I don't know if any of you all remember having your dinner on the grounds on Sunday at church, and, you know, having church scene and have, serve local, local foods and everything. I have someone I have in mind for working with on that, just depends on whether or not they'll do it. And then David Mann has suggested that we do a sunflower fields tour, and he has even offered to provide all of the sunflowers to everyone who is willing to plant sunflowers on their property. He had sunflowers this year, you know, the gentleman always down at, Mr. Qualls always has them, they're on 23, and you can see them. And then the folks at Punggol Farms, they had the most beautiful sunflowers I think I have ever seen, they stood like straight up, they were beautiful. So, and then, so we'll talk about the VA 250, and Jeff, my extraordinary chairman, is sitting right here, and I'll just tell you what all we've done. Of course, we did the Fourth of July Parade, Duffield Days, we had, did the Harvest Moon, Boston Tea Party. He's been going to the schools and talking about Constitution, we're talking about doing the Christmas parades. We meet bi-monthly, we, we've met a lot, so, and then, but the main thing that they encourage you all to do for the Virginia 250 is to create legacy projects, and we've come up with a few ideas, one of them, the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association, one thing that they would like to do is, last year, they had a log cabin taken down and donated to them, and they would like to reconstruct a loom house at the Wilderness Block, at the Wilderness Road Blockhouse, so that's a possibility. They have also, we have also talked with the folks, Cindy Williams, she with the Historical Society, they have been, they've worked with us so, so much. the Historical Society, they have been, they've worked with us so, so much. Um, talking about perhaps doing a website for them. Um, the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail folks, they are going to bring back the trade fair in Muster in April next year. And then the Harvest Moon Celebr, and then the Harvest Fair that they did the end of October. And we're also talking about doing a period fashion show led by Pamela Eddy, who she's done that before and says that that goes over wonderfully. And probably the biggest thing that we will do is in twenty twenty-five, since that is, you know, two hundred and fifty years of the blazing of the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail. So, I mean, my idea would be to, you know, to start at the Long Island of the Holston and to, you know, to walk all the way, you know, to Cumberland Gap. I don't know who else wants to do that. Um, and they are working on, the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail folks, people, they are working on trying to secure properties to recreate Can Gap, that part that is original to the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail. They were supposed to meet, um, with the surveyor today. And then something happened and he couldn't go. So anyway, they're working on that project. Um, part, a large part of that is owned by one family. And they do want to sell that. Of course, they don't need all of that property, so that property could be used for something else. And then that's all I have. So if anybody has any questions.
Pamela, I've got one thing I want to mention. I had a friend, he's right, went to Norton to go up into High Knob to look at leaves a few weeks ago. And, uh, I think the new building that Norton has built is now built as the gateway to Devil's Bathtub.
Oh, really?
I think so. And so I got online, and I'm not good on, I, I don't know where I found this, but, uh, Devil's Bathtub, I think is now located in White County.
Yeah, they've done that.
The home of the Devil's Bathtub. And when you do your agritourism, when you do anything, let people know that the Devil's Bathtub has not moved, it's still in Scott County.
I, I, I know exactly, I know exactly who did that. Um, I've talked to him that, and, you know, explained, you know, and to stop, please stop doing that. But the next time we have a High Knob meeting, I think we have one next week, don't we? A week after next?
Seventeen.
Yeah. We will, I'll address that with them again.
Thank you.
Yeah. I did not realize that they-
I don't know where I found all that. I, I read a lot, but it's just stuck in my mind.
I, well, one of the, um, I think, I know, I know who's, who, who's done that. And that's, that started several years ago. So I, I'll talk to him about it. So, and, you know, just tell them that we would like to.
Have them bring it back if they can.
We've had trouble before about Phil Stony Falls and Mark Camp Lake.
Oh, yeah.
Which are both in Scott County.
Indeed.
We've had that same sort of issue.
So, we know-
It's bothered me.
Well, we know where it is, you know. So, but yeah, that's unfortunate that, that they're doing that. So don't steal from us. So, okay. So, well, thank you all. It's been a pleasure.
I'm still getting the birthplace of country music. Scott County is the birthplace of country music.
I know. I know, I know.
That's for your time.
That drives me crazy.
Yeah.
That drives me crazy, too. And believe it or not, I was around, gosh, I was working for the Kingsport Chamber when Tim White came up with that idea. And it's, the only reason that that went up there was because they would give him the money to create that mural. And, you know, they come into Scott County and said, you know, I mean, he works with Rita. So he works for Song of the Mountain, he knows better. Oh, I always forget one time, I'm sorry.
One more, one more thing. How much money did you say Carter Foe was getting?
Five hundred thousand.
I thought that's what you-
Five hundred thousand. Five hundred thousand from the-
That's a lot of money.
It is. And it, and it has to do with, um, there, there will be, I'm pretty sure that there will be some recordings made. And, and it, they will make a big deal out of the fiftieth anniversary.
Good.
So, yeah. And there's, there, I, I've heard, I've heard that a very iconic person is on tap. Oh, hey. Oh, hey.
We'll do lunch, Pam.
You did a good job with this plan, you really did. Your heart's in it and you do a great job.
Thank you, thanks. Well, I, I've enjoyed it, I've enjoyed it. I still enjoy it. So, anyway.
When you talk about retiring, it kind of scared me a little bit.
I, I know, I know. But then, you know, then I thought about it and I'm like, what would I do?
What would you do?
What would I do?
You could do a little tap for us and like-
Tap dance?
No.
If I don't tell you that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't dance nor sing. Thank you.
All right, now toward the ends, we do have one hour for close session. But before we do that, we'll comment, request, recommendations from each board member. Mr. D, do you have anything?
Just want to thank the staff for the good job they do and, uh, a happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Mr. Tipton?
I would just echo the same sentiments as before. We appreciate all the staff does and so forth. Um, I talked to Bill about this, Bill, I just want to share this. Um, we did a lot of fundraising for, with American Legion for our tank fund. And so what we were in hopes of doing, um, one of the guys had traveled to France, you know, where they drive those N sixty tanks around in, in the cities and so forth. So they have sub companies, you know, here in the States. And so we were hopeful to get wheels from them, but that hasn't been the case. So we, we have a backup plan, which is, we're, they'll need to be sandblasted. And, and I think we have a guy going out today to actually, to see about that. And, uh, and, uh, hopefully we'll be moving in that direction just to let people out there know that, uh, we appreciate those funds and that will be put to good use. And, uh, the painting and so forth, it'd be hard to do that in the winter months, but, you know, when spring gets here, we can put some new on that. And I mentioned to Bill about an LED light. And you were going to check with, I guess, AEP probably. And, uh, the LED light hopefully would be a little bit better light, lighting out there, perhaps. So, um, we appreciate what you've been doing in that regard.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's going to be a problem. They're, they're really proactive about wanting to switch those last LED, or LED anyway. So, uh, we've got a couple of other places that, some of those solid waste centers that were doing that as well.
Okay, we appreciate it. I know, uh, inmates that are cleaning up, one day last week, they were way deep and done. They've done a really job on cleaning around and everything, so it looked good. All right, Ms. Rick. Uh, excuse me, just one thing I want to mention. I mentioned to Frida and Sally yesterday. I know the unit system has taken a lot of work from the staff. But what we got from Tina's say, I can actually read that budget much better. Have you looked at the budget that we get from Tina? That, I don't know what it is about it, uh, but, but it's just easier to read to me. I know it's been a lot of trouble for y'all, but, but I, that part of the unit system. Anything else? Nope. This is it.
Oh, no, anything?
This is it.
A few things. Um, I do want to encourage, uh, the folks in Scott County here in the county to call the treasurer's office and ask to keep longer hours. Because right now, their office hours is eight thirty to four thirty. When we came into the board meeting this morning, I noticed a handful of folks standing back there waiting to pay their taxes. Um, that's unfortunate that, um, there's thirty-five hours that the office is open for, during tax season. Uh, I'd encourage, you know, I'd ask the treasurer to, uh, consider keeping longer hours, especially for those folks that are working and trying to pay their taxes, want to come and pay them in person. Um, but I do appreciate the staff and everybody here. But you guys do a great job, fantastic job here. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Couple of things I want to mention. Uh, there's a big event happening Friday night. West Springs and Rock Hill, both of them have excellent teams. It's going to be, uh, uh, something to watch. So if you can in the county, come watch those two teams play. Both of them are good. I don't, I don't know who, who is going to win that game, but they're both good.
Scott County Super Bowl.
Say again?
Scott County Super Bowl.
That's, that's what we, so anyway, it's going to be a good event for the county. So I encourage, you know, both teams, they're, you know, both are good teams and it's going to be fun to watch. The other thing on the, on, uh, the eighteenth, Santa Train runs in Dunkin' at four oh three or something, they start about twenty minutes, you can kind of see that. It's a huge event, uh, in Dunkin'. And so I checked it out. We always go over, church does, clean everything up, bush hog and get it ready. It's a big event. Uh, the, our church gets a, we have two flatbed loads of stuff the Santa Train gives us to hand out. There's stuff they can't throw out off the train. So they give it to us to hand out. So there'll be a lot of people there to, to enjoy this. If you can, come Dunkin' on, on the eighteenth and enjoy the Santa Train. All right. That's all I have. Uh, we do have, uh, one hour for, for close session. So, uh, let me read this little statement and we'll go into close session. Anybody anything before we go into close session? Or need a motion? That one hour to go into close session, need a motion?
Home move.
Need a second?
Second.
All right. Let me bring the close second. See you. This board enters in close session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one, being personnel with the county administrator and county attorney. All in favor, both of us say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries, so we will go into close session.